Erase that part of my mind. Being an ass. On St. Patrick's Day, how dare me? I love it. I think they scared me away.
I took a picture of what you were seeing yesterday. You like dogs? Here's something. Yeah, she did it. Oh. So good. Thank you. Showing some love for the bond. Living the dream? Good morning. I'd like to call to order the March 17, 2015 Board of Supervisors meeting on St. Patrick's Day. We'll call this.
Supervisor Carol.
Time to the Lording to you.
Supervisor Elias. Supervisor Elias.
Presenting.
Supervisor Miller.
Here.
Supervisor Valdez.
President.
Chair Barnes.
Here.
Let the record show all members of the present.
Please rise for the invocation to be offered by Pastor Lupe Rodriguez of Agafe Christian Fellowship Church to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Supervisor Valdez.
Thank you. Heavenly Father, we are gathered here this morning in this great city of Tucson, Lord. The great number of people, God, are leaders. And this morning, Lord, we pray for wisdom, for knowledge, so that these great men and women can leave this city of ours into a great future. I ask that you bless them, bless their marriages, their children, their physical bodies, Lord God. And I just pray, God, that everything that is said and done today would be to better our city, Lord God, and to help us to grow together as one body. We thank you, and we give you all the glory, in Jesus' name. And everybody say amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Move on to pause for pause. We have one change to the agenda. On the regular agenda, page three, item 11, Board of Supervisors, it's a hearing of appeal of review officers' decision in Frank and Cheryl Heck's appeal. Staff is requesting that the item be removed from the agenda as the matter has been resolved. There are no objections. We'll settle down the agenda.
Master.
Supervisor Elias.
I'd just ask for a moment of personal privilege.
Proceed.
Um, we've all been busy, and we did not make a comment here at the Board of Supervisors about the passing of Esther Tang. And that's a person who really gave a lot to our community, a lot to Pima County. She served as the Director of Bealesimo for many years and helped educate many of our folks in their kindergarten years. Fortunately, she did not have the task of trying to educate me during that period, but my brother and sister both went to Bealesimo, as well as others. And the other thing I'd also mention was her family's donation of land to Pima County as part of the open space process, and that was valuable and made a big difference to us all. And so I could go on for another half an hour about Esther Tang and her life, but I did want to take a moment to make sure that we all recognized that this is the passing of a person who really cared about all of us here in Pima County and devoted her life's services and her life's work to that effort. So, thank you, Mrs. Tang.
Thank you, Supervisor Elias. Supervisor Valdez.
Follow up to Supervisor Elias, one personal privilege. You know, I had the great honor of knowing that Esther Tang, for a very long time, as we used to go to the field as well with my mom for craft classes. And I remember, and I used to tell her this, and she would laugh, that I remember looking up to her.
And you have to understand, Esther was maybe five foot, maybe, yeah.
But she was an absolutely wonderful lady that thankfully I not only got to interact with as a young man, but rather as an adult. And she and her family contributed a lot to this community, and so publicly wanted to thank them.
Thank you, Supervisor Valdez. Supervisor Carol.
Chair, thank you very much. I also would like to add my condolences, especially to the family for the loss of their matriarch. But I want to remind those that are interested, on Saturday, this Saturday, at 1:00 PM, there will be a mass at St. Peter and Paul Catholic Church in 1946 East Lee Street. There'll be a mass in the morning, and Bishop Pucanus will be presiding over the final mass set for Esther Tang and her family. I do appreciate having known Esther, and God rest her memory and her soul. Thank you very much, Chair.
And I will add several other items. I knew Esther when she served on the Board of Pima Community College, and Esther was very much involved in the beginnings of the Keno Learning Center, so very, very strong commitment to education throughout her life, and her legacy will live on, and she will be missed. And with that, I'd like to bring up Buster. Buster, are you around somewhere? Buster Brown, Officer Carver.
Oh, Buster, I wasn't sure if you were talking to me or the dog. This is Buster. Buster is a wonderful dog. He is, he's about eight years old, but you'd never know it because he still has a whole lot of puppy in him. He's had a hard life. He was actually picked up in regards to an abandonment case. By the time the officers got to him, he had been locked in a bedroom of an abandoned house for several days. He has bounced back and is just a joy. I mean, he loves everyone. He knows a few tricks. We'll see if we can get him to perform. Buster, sit. One more, sit. Okay, no, just one puppy. So he is very treat motivated. So am I. So we'll come over on this side so everyone can get to see him. But he hasn't found anyone he doesn't like. He takes to everyone. He seems to get along well with other dogs. I walked him down the kennel line, and all the dogs get excited because this one's out, and they're going nuts, barking, and he just walks right by. He knows where he wants to go. And I believe, you know, it's one of these things people always ask me, are they housebroken? Well, in our facility, they kind of are forced to go inside, but I can tell you, soon as we got out the door, he was ready to do his business. So that tells me, yes, he is housebroken. Let's try one more time for this side so everyone can see. Buster, Buster, focus. Here we go. But as our March special continues, all the adoption fees are waived, just the cost of a $15 license. $15 for a dog like this, what a ganga. Thank you.
Well, doesn't he, he sort of has kind of reddish hair. You think he's Irish?
He might be Irish, between the reddish hair and the green leash.
Thank you, Officer. All right, we will move on to now presentations and proclamations. Item five, proclamation for Southwest Fair Housing Council, Inc. What's the pleasure of the board? Motion and a second, objections, hearing non. Motion carries. Supervisor, would you like to do the, Elias, would you like to do the presentation? Is Jay Young here? Oh, there you are.
Um, I have this proclamation to read about fair housing, a particularly important issue in today's world, and we've seen it come up several times in the last year and a half in very critical places. And it's important to remember how important fair housing is to all of us. It still is a cornerstone of how we create healthy neighborhoods. It's really about fairness, and it's yet to be defined entirely its role and its expanding role in today's society. I would make particular note that the Fair Housing Act was passed in April of 1968 after the assassination of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., was an important issue to him, and one of the four big civil rights acts that were passed by the United States of America, three of them during that tumultuous period. But this one in particular was painful. The president spoke passionately about it, and it was passed that same week that Dr. King was assassinated, proving that the United States Senate and House can act in a quick manner, something we lose sight of in today's political world. Anyways, I'll go ahead and read this and then ask you if you'd like to make any comments on behalf of your organizations. Whereas the Civil Rights Act of 1968, the Fair Housing Act, and the Fair Housing Amendments Act of 1988 ensure full and fair access to housing opportunity. And whereas April 2015 marks the 47th anniversary of the signing of the Fair Housing Act, and whereas shelter is a basic human need, and when shelter is denied, the quality of human life is greatly diminished. And whereas people must not be denied equal access to and enjoyment of housing because of race, color, national origin, religion, gender, disability, or familial status. And whereas Pima County recognizes and values the efforts of those who seek to reduce barriers to full and fair housing opportunity. And whereas April is designated nationally as Fair Housing Month, now therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby declares the month of April 2015 to be the Fair Housing Month and encourages all Pima County residents to work for tolerance and equal housing opportunity in our community. Passed and adopted this 17th day of March, 2015. So, without further ado, I'll pass this on to you, and you can pass it down the line if you want to make some comments, Jay. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. My name is Jay Young. I'm the Executive Director of the Southwest Fair Housing Council. First of all, I'd like to thank Pima County and the Board of Supervisors for the continued support of the Southwest Fair Housing Council. We've been around since 1986. We're based here in Tucson, but we're a statewide organization. We help people that have experienced illegal housing discrimination. People can walk into our office, they can call us on the phone, they can contact us via the Internet as well, via our website, swfac.com. Many people don't realize that housing discrimination is still a major problem in our communities, and it's not just about being denied housing if you're looking for an apartment or looking for insurance for your home. But the Fair Housing Act also mandates that jurisdictions alleviate segregated housing patterns, which Pima County and the city of Tucson still has, as do most communities in this country. And I would also like to say that our civil rights are under attack. There are many things that have been done over the past several years that have put many of our civil rights that we have taken for granted in jeopardy. So, thank you for the Board of Supervisors again for the support. April is Fair Housing Month, so if you'd like to know more, you can look on our website, swfac.com, or if you know somebody who's experienced illegal housing discrimination, please put them in touch with our agency. Thank you. I brought some friends who would also like to say a couple of things.
Thank you, and good morning. I'm Stephanie Parker, and I'm an unembarrassed disability justice advocate going back to 2000, when I was just a kid. And I'm delighted to be here to support this proclamation and to help us all to understand that fair housing is about inclusion, equity, and access for everybody, that everybody can have housing that is safe and secure, and that they can move through their lives knowing that people like us, all of us, are supporting them. Thank you very much.
Good morning. I'm Gail Boucher, and I am the Housing Coordinator for Direct Center for Independence. And our role in the community is again to support access into housing for individuals with disabilities, and we strongly support this proclamation. Thank you.
To item six, presentation of the proclamation to Greg Fahy and Michael Greenbaum regarding American Parkinson's Disease Association Chapter proclaiming the month of April 2015 to be Parkinson's Awareness Month. What's the pleasure of the board on this side? Motion and a second to approve any objections, hearing non. Motion carries. Supervisor Valdez, would you present the proclamation to Greg and Michael? Is Michael with you? No? Okay.
Greg, if you could bear with me, I just want to read the proclamation. Parkinson's Disease, whereas Parkinson's Disease is a chronic progressive neurological disease that is second most common neurodegenerative disease in the United States. There anybody say that three times really quick? Whereas there's an inadequate data on the incidence and prevalence of Parkinson's Disease, but it is estimated to affect 500,000 to 1.5 million people in the United States, and the prevalence will more than double by 2040. And whereas Parkinson's Disease is the 14th leading cause of death in the United States according to Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. And whereas it is estimated that the economic burden of Parkinson's Disease is at least $14.4 billion annually, including indirect costs to patients and family members of about $6.3 billion. And whereas research suggests the cause of Parkinson's Disease is a combination of genetic and environmental factors, but the exact cause and progression of the disease is still unknown. And whereas there is no objective test or biomarker for Parkinson's Disease, and there is no cure or drug to slow or halt the progression of the disease. And whereas the symptoms of Parkinson's Disease vary from person to person and can include tremors, slowness of movement and rigidity, difficulty with balance, swallowing, chewing, and speaking, cognitive impairment and dementia, mood disorders, and a variety of other non-motor symptoms. And whereas volunteers, researchers, caregivers, and medical professionals are working to improve the quality of life of persons living with Parkinson's Disease and their families. And whereas increased research, education, and community support services are needed to find more effective treatments and to provide access to quality care to those living with the disease today. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaim the month of April 2015 to be Parkinson's Awareness Month, passed and adopted this 17th day of March, 2015.
Thank you, Supervisor Valdez, and thank you to the entire Board of Supervisors. I'm Greg Fahy, and I'm the Treasurer of the Arizona Chapter of the American Parkinson's Disease Association. My wife has Parkinson's, so I've gotten interested in it. The national organization's been around since 1961, state organization since 1925 years it's been around. So what we do is educate people as to what's the latest thing going on in drugs and treatment and all that, and then we also subsidize exercise programs because that's shown to be a key, not curing the disease, but in keeping it at bay and allowing people to last much longer in productive lives. So we thank you very much for recognizing the disease and its problems and making April Parkinson's Awareness Month. And again, thanks.
And before we move on to call to the audience, I'd like to recognize someone who is in the audience, Farmer Supervisor Ed Morris joining us today. Thank you, Ed. I'm not sure, I'm not sure when Ed comes up and talks whether we'll be thanking him, but we'll see. And with that, we'll move to call to the audience. Let me remind everybody, you have three minutes. We ask that you not be non-repetitive and that you abide by the rules of civility. And when you come to the podium, please state your name. Reverend Steve Springer?
Yes, I'm Pastor Stephen Springer from Dublin Peace Lutheran Church, and I'm here to speak in favor of the progress of the bond proposal. I am on the Board of Job Path, and Job Path is, at least in the current iteration of the proposal, is going to, would be, would provide a building for Job Path. I'd like the Job Path people who are here to please stand up. And I guess I see the PCIC people also standing up, which is appropriate. And our alliance includes neighborhood reinvestment, low-income housing, and open space. I am on the Board of Directors of Job Path, but I am on that because I am part of PCIC, which is the organizing force behind Job Path. And we support the bond proposal in its current iteration, and PCIC represents dozens of faith communities with thousands of people of faith who will be watching this proposal as it goes forward, and we look forward to supporting it and working with you. So thank you for your leadership so far on this, and we'll keep working with you and watching. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy Moore.
Good morning, Mr. Huckleberry, Madam Chairman, and Supervisors. My name is Nancy Marge. I've been a resident, my husband and I have been residents of Pima County for the last 30 years in District Five, and I am here to voice my support of the bond issue as well. We hope you will put the bond package to the vote in November and that you will decide to do so as quickly as possible, as recommended by the Bond Advisory Committee. I work downtown as a business attorney, and I'm a longtime supporter of various arts organizations. I'm also on the Board of the Tucson Symphony Orchestra. In all of those capacities, I, along with my business clients, my colleagues, and my neighbors, have a vested interest in both the economic and the cultural vibrancy of downtown and of our whole community, especially the renovation of the downtown community theaters, the TCC, the Leo Rich Theater, and the Echo Plaza. If we can restore the cultural center there, it will attract entertainment dollars, and it will make Pima County a place that businesses want to relocate to and create an enriched quality of life that we will all benefit from. It's an investment worth making. Improvements to the Music Hall and the Leo Rich Theater and the Echo Plaza will raise property values, increase your tax base, and increase your tax dollars. It will also create an environment that will encourage additional investment beyond the physical footprint of the theaters in the area. The HSL Properties Hotel nearby, the Allen Norville Properties will benefit, La Placita will benefit, and perhaps spur additional development and redevelopment. There are many others like me who will come out and support a bond issue to invest in Pima County and in our future. It's been a long time since the last bond issue, and we can't afford to wait long for another one. Please decide to put it on the ballot so that we can all help to get out the vote and work together to make Pima County a more livable, vital, and vibrant place, home and community for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Julia Granelli. Can I pronounce your name, last name, correct?
I'm good enough. Granelli.
Granelli, okay.
Thank you.
Italian?
Yes. I'm Julia Granelli from Green Valley, and I thank everyone for being here and having an interest in our community this morning. I'm here to discuss the subject of primitive roads. On March 6, 2015, Mr. Huckleberry released a draft of the Pima County Economic Development Plan. The county proposes strategies and actions to pursue the improvement of the regional economy, steps the county can take in the near term to grow our local economy, increase jobs, and overall community wealth. It is in the spirit of this economic development plan that I ask you today to utilize Statute 286705 to take the dirt roads in the Montana Vista subdivisions into the maintenance system. I am not proposing costly paved roads, but simple grading and/or adding of gravel to the existing road beds to qualify for the very important inclusion into the Pima County road maintenance system. Being in the maintenance system not only entitles the residents to have traffic laws enforced, but the rules and regulations of the Departments of Transportation and Flood Control as well. Without being in the maintenance system, ordinary issues that come up on any other road can't be handled. It's a legal dichotomy, apparently. At the present time, when someone moves awash, damaging ingress and egress to the residents, the Department of Transportation and Flood Control cannot do anything about it because someone has to die in order for the level of concern to be brought forth. The white binders distributed to you today, I'm presenting for your consideration, some of the problems that arise from the roads are not in the county maintenance system. You wouldn't know about these if you didn't live out there where these problems exist every day. Healthcare. Two residents from the subdivision are here today to describe to you the difficulty they have encountered, things you wouldn't ordinarily expect because of location. Taxi and transportation services are not available in this subdivision. Suntram and Sun Shuttle do not operate in the subdivision. The school bus. School bus only comes to the edge of the subdivision, requiring parents to make two trips a day to the bus stop to pick up their children. This activity creates increased and unnecessary dust for our neighbors and adjacent subdivisions. Trash service. An additional $8 per month is charged by Waste Management for going over poorly maintained roads. Other trash companies will not even consider coming into the subdivision at all.
Ma'am, your time is up, but thank you. If you might want to just hold up your notebook, and you obviously have done your homework, and we certainly will review it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joanna Hoggan? I'm sure I knew the lady that made Joanna.
Good morning. I am also a resident of Montana Vista. My husband and myself have been living there since 82. He, over the years, has serious health issues. It's requiring frequent emergency visits to the hospital. It's very stressful. The road conditions, the wash conditions are at best hazardous, impossible many times. My latest experience with a situation like that, he was released from the hospital. He had an arrectation of his foot and he required, had a wound wrapped, what needed to be serviced, and the wound treated every three days. Due to the placement of the wound wrap, it was difficult for him to operate correctly. And it became necessary that he needed daily visits from the nursing. They informed me that they no longer could service that due to the fact that the road conditions were such since the nursing personnel used their own vehicles. So therefore it was necessary for him to be readmitted to St. Mary's Hospital till his situation was cured, that he was able to come home. I, my little business is that I raise horses and I no longer, it is the condition of the wash is so bad, I no longer can transport the horses. So that impacts me financially. But the main thing is the, you never know if you're able to get in or out of the place. And it is, I would hope that your Board would consider Mrs. Granelli's request. Thank you.
Thank you. Lou Sampson?
Hi, my name's Lou Sampson. I'm from Green Valley. And I wanted to thank those supervisors who spoke up last week and questioned the impact that Mr. Huckleberry's request to raise our rates on our sewers of 4% over three years was going to have on the citizens, especially citizens that are on fixed incomes. It seemed that many of you were surprised with this request and maybe previously had been told if you voted on a contract, it wouldn't happen. But it seems that we're told something and then something else happens. And I want you to know, I was at an event about three or four weeks ago with Mr. Carroll, Supervisor Carroll, who is our supervisor. And he brought a lady from the Public Works Department down there. And she was explaining about the roads and how we didn't have repair money and the state was sweeping all the HERF money, so we didn't have that. And we needed a 10-cent tax on every gallon of gas. That's what they're pushing in order to repair our roads. And if we didn't get that 10-cent gallon of gas tax, that we'd probably have to cut the Sheriff's Department. And then I heard Mr. Carroll on a radio show and he was saying how we weren't getting funds from the federal government and we weren't getting funds from the state government and they were sweeping our HERF money for our road repairs. And then, I didn't really know what HERF was, so I looked it up. HERF is when the state collects a gas tax and it goes into a pot and it's divided into the counties. And it's specifically for repair and maintenance of our roads. Since 1994, Pima County has had $841 million in HERF money coming to us. Out of that money, $34 million was swept back to Arizona State. So that's a whole lot of money we still have left in Pima County for, to repair our roads. And then I found out that out of that over $800 million for our road repair, only 20 of that was spent for road repair. The rest is spent on bonds and other administrative money. So it seems that we've all been fooled. We're told one thing and then another thing happens. And if we spend another $1,600 million on a bond, how do we know where that money's going to go? We really, can we really trust you to spend our money in a way that you say you're going to spend it? So it's my opinion that you've got plenty of money. It's just a matter of where you choose to spend it. And until you can show us that you are responsible with our money, I don't think we should give you another dime. So, thank you.
Patricia Dent?
Good morning. My name is Patricia Dent. I do live in Montana Vista and I've been a resident of Pima County for many years and taught school and retired there from Nogales. I'll read the letter that I wrote that's included with the book. I did say to whom it may concern, my husband Terry Dent, actually was 100% disabled then, passed away from congestive heart failure on October 13, 2014. The VA had approved Sun Life, a home healthcare agency, and I put their number, to come out to the house to provide respite care. On October 6, a young girl came out. Respite care was again scheduled for October 8, but no one from that agency would come out because the young girl had said that she had had bumper damage on her way out of our road. No one at Sun Life would come out to provide authorized respite care. Our roads have been a problem for years. Even the 911 dispatcher wouldn't listen when I tried to give her directions on the day my husband died and had his heart attack. "We have GPS," she said. Well, but she didn't know that GPS maps are not accurate out there. The information provided by the county MapQuest and other GPS mediated sites sends traffic over the south portion of Cielo of Sioux, which is not passable. Please use some of the tax money to our roads. I also read an article on, just as Sunday, March 15, where Mr. Carroll, out of the paper, said, "He's trying to find ways to beef up roads and other infrastructure." That's wonderful. I hope all of you, including Mr. Carroll, find some money to beef up our roads. I realize that we've had a lot of changes in our budget recently and everybody's out and I really hope we can sustain the things that are so important, libraries and things that we need. In conclusion, I heard Fair Housing wants access to communities of disabled person. Well, that's, we need those through our roads where we live. I hope it will do some good and I really appreciate everybody listening and being here today. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming. Bridget Stevenson?
Good morning. My name is Bridget Stevenson. I live in Sajarita. I am a third grade teacher there. I also serve on the Board of Directors of the Reed Parks and Logical Society. I'm here today because I want you to support the bond election in 2015 and I urge you to put it on the ballot for the voters to vote on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jerry Otoboni?
Madam Chairman and Board of Supervisors, my name is Jerry Otoboni and I live in Oro Valley. And once again, the symphony and the arts community come here like little piggies at the trough with their hands out demanding taxpayer money, or something like what they have in Ireland. I called every single county in Arizona. They range from approximately 1,500 to 4.5 million since they have symphonies, but they are able to acquire grants for what they need. Interestingly, Maricopa County with its 4.5 million people have not considered a bond to pay for a new symphony hall. You from the symphony and other groups are apparently too lazy to write grants. You would rather greedily ask for money on the backs of the taxpayer and poor families and children. Shame on you. This was the sixth poorest city in the county. And now thanks to Huckleberry, the highest-paid tax and spending gentleman, we have moved to the fifth poorest city in the county, country, not county. Especially you locusts from the opera and symphony will probably bring us down to the second poorest city in the county. What are you people thinking? Are you not able to do the math? With the interest, operation cost, and maintenance, the bond will realistically cost over $1 billion with $275 million in interest. One woman asked me if highly-paid Huckleberry that makes $320,000, $100,000 more than Maricopa is trying to force seniors and struggling families with children out of their homes. Are you greedy people coming here begging for money, not doing it on your own with grants? You should be ashamed. Two baseball players came here asking to pass the bond so they can put the baseball club teams out of business. These teams have been around for years and privately fund their organizations. These baseball gentlemen are looking to have the bond fund and fund their baseball endeavors. This bond will seriously hurt the taxpayer by funding organizations who should be privately funding and writing grants to fund their own projects. So I'm asking that you vote no on this bond and not overpriced, overpriced and devastating to the taxpayer and seniors on fixed incomes and poor families. Thank you.
Robert Hanser?
Good morning and thank you for having me here this morning. I represent Arizona Opera, one of the arts organizations you just heard about.
Your typing is impeccable.
I'm on the Board of Directors of the Opera and I'm the president-elect and will assume the presidency of the Opera in May for the next two years. As you know, we put on five performances of different operas at the Tucson Musical every year. And we put on two performances of those, so we're in the house for main stage performances 10 times a year. In addition, we use the musical for rehearsal and for education programs. We bring in more student, number of student groups to our dress rehearsals. We find operating the hall very difficult and really we hope that you can put, support the bond issue so that we can look forward to some improvements. The lobby space is almost impossible for our audience to move around in. Before the doors are open for us to get in, we stand huddled in the car afraid of bumping into someone. The restroom situation is almost impossible. One restroom, two restrooms blocking off half of the lobby space. It's very difficult to use the elevator when it works. The staircases are narrow, up and down, people do it simultaneously so that people are coming down or people are trying to get up to the balcony. It puts an added strain on our audience and actually people will say they don't come to the opera because of the difficulty of navigating the hall. We believe that the opera performs a benefit to this community, not only in providing entertainment, but an education, and bringing people into the downtown area. We look forward to your support and thank you for listening.
Thank you Anne Lyman?
Hello. I'm Anne Lyman and I live in Oro Valley. And hearing some of these other comments alters things a little bit in what I was going to say. But my husband and I moved here and built our home 13 years ago. One of the reasons that we came to this area is because we felt that Tucson is real. And you ask a lot of people why they have gravitated here and it's because there is a history, there is a cultural base, there's more to this town than a resort town. And a lot of that is reflected in many different ways. There are many different ways to continue to have Tucson be the wonderful, real place that it is today. The balance on this bond issue looks really fine. It looks like it's encompassing a lot of different areas, a lot of different interests and needs. It seems that there is a place for a balance between privately promoted things and grants and also the public through the bond issue. As a trustee of the Tucson Museum of Art, I'm particularly educated more about the potential of the Pima County Courthouse and the utilization of the museum in that regard. Being up in Oro Valley, I'm watching a lot of interest in that area of what's happening in the city. There's been a tremendous growth in the downtown area, both economically and culturally. It is a draw for others to be down here. The Pima County Courthouse is an icon, a beacon as part of that draw. If the museum does have the opportunity to come into here and to help in the restoration and to offer cultural and historic visions of the Southwest, it will help the area. We, our current exhibition is drawing 22,000 people from this area and from outside of this area. I mean, that represents an economic growth and a cultural growth in this community that we'd like to see continued. So thank you very much for your consideration. I'm here to support having the bond as part of the November election.
Thank you. Mary Murphy?
Good morning, everyone. Good morning Board. I haven't seen you since before Christmas. You should all learn what's been going on with me since then, because you all figure into it. And I came to say, yeah, it's St. Patrick's Day. The last time I was here, everybody was ticked off at me by the end of the meeting and I got gabbled twice as I was trying to repeat a little verse from a Moody Blues song, "Question." I repeat it now. "But in the gray of the morning, my mind becomes confused between the dead and the sleeping and the road that I must choose." The Tucson Symphony Orchestra brought this one home to me, February 7, when they performed with the rock band, Procol Harum Electric Light Orchestra, Moody Blues. This was their encore. No gabbling. I have a copy for everyone. They opened, the Tucson Symphony Orchestra, sorry to hear, I was there, my ticket price helped somebody go to the bathroom even more easily, I don't know. They opened with "Conquistador." If you ever get the opportunity to listen to the orchestra on "Conquistador," you'll get it. I want you to read the words. I want you to know what they said. They opened with "Conquistador." They encoreed with "Question." And what's been going on with me? Well, you'll find it in the lyrics of a song called "For What It's Worth." There's something happening here. What it is ain't exactly clear. And you'll slip down to the line I highlighted. "You step out of line, the man comes and takes you away." I was taken away from my home, my family home where I've been, my family's been for over 50 years. I was taken from it. My Fourth Amendment right to be secure in my home and person has been violated repeatedly. Things are only just coming to the head with the neighbor on the other side of me, 149 East Los Arcos. All the corruption of the homeowners association, the Green Valley Council, Pima County, it's all coming out. So enjoy the lyrics. Thank you Tucson Symphony Orchestra. I think they'll get a younger crowd in there. Don't think, it's not snappy at all if they are rocking. Join them. And I'll see you next time. Missed you guys. Oh, my phone is 625-7511 in case anyone wants to reach me. Thank you.
James Ahida?
Good morning. My name is James Ahida. I live in District 2. I work in Casa Maria, the soup kitchen. And I'm here to talk on support of the bond. Given the economic situation and what is going on with the budget, this is the right time and this is the right thing to do for the community. There is great need and with this bond packet, it covers a lot of those needs in the community. It's about building economic development in our community and giving an opportunity to people to be part of this community. So I strongly support, and not only support, but we at Casa Maria are very committed to work in making sure that this passes. This is part of the coalition with, along with Job Path, Open Space, Neighborhood Reinvestment, and Affordable Housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jeanne and Fine Frank? I can't quite read the last name. I can't quite read the last name. I got Frank. It is Finefrank? Hi, hi, okay. Hi, H. Oh, I got you.
Honorable members, my name is Jeanne. I'm Frank. And I am president of the Menlo Park Neighborhood Association. On behalf of association members, I too have a proclamation to deliver relating to the Pima County Bond. Whereas, Menlo Park, known as Tucson's birthplace, is the home of Tucson Origins Heritage Park, including Mission Garden, and Sentinel Peak, Tumamok Hill, the soaring Luis Gutierrez Bridge, the booming Mercado District and the bustling West Den Station for the modern streetcar. Whereas, these icons could not exist without city-county leadership, public-private partnerships and money levied through sales and property taxes. Whereas, taxes are not a bad thing. Without taxes, how will we pay to repair our crumbling roads, build a world-class loop, improve art parks and rec facilities or maintain our public infrastructure? Whereas, hundreds of people have attended the Pima County Bond Committee hearings to intelligently voice their passion and support for dozens and dozens of community improvement projects designed to benefit all the residents of Pima County. Whereas, we understand that the return on investment to build and maintain these projects is generated through their very existence as they work to create jobs and attract businesses and visitors to our unique region from all over the world. Whereas, the bond provides the necessary fuel to power the economic engine we depend on to build and manage a sustainable, livable, thriving community. Whereas, Menlo Park and the entire region will benefit from the bond's passage with improvements to neighborhood walkability, Sentinel Peak and the construction of a vital regional orientation center. Whereas, we understand that you only get what you pay for. And whereas, we understand that win or lose, it takes courage to do the right thing. Therefore, during our monthly meeting held March twelfth, two thousand and fifteen, we, the members of the Menlo Park Neighborhood Association, voted unanimously to support a proclamation in favor of placing the Pima County Bond before the voters of Pima County and be assured that we will work tirelessly to get the vote, to get Menlo Park voters to the polls on Election Day. Respectfully submitted, Jeanne Finefrank, President of the Menlo Park Neighborhood Association.
Thank you for calling. Randy Saraglio.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Randy Saraglio and I'm here to represent the organization I work for, the Center for Biological Diversity and also the Coalition for Snore and Desert Protection. I sit on the board. I represent my organization on that board. And I'm also on the executive committee of the Reconcurement of the Stere Club. Throughout this long and sometimes painful process with the Bond Advisory Committee, I stood up at various times to advocate for open space as a part of that bond. But every time I did that, I also advocated for neighborhood reinvestment, job path and low-income housing and all the other things that are so important to our community and to me as an individual citizen of that community. And I think that was a lot of hard work. And, you know, our organizations, the ones that I represent, also put our money where our mouth was. We took a cut from what we wanted and a package was, was put together. A deal was struck and now it is before you. And I think that after all the hard work that has gone into this over years, it would be a real shame to see this not come to the ballot, to not give us the opportunity to make this great people forward for our community. And so this morning, on St. Patrick's Day with my green shirt on, I'm gonna do the symbolic rolling up of the sleeves because the moment, the moment, I mean, I didn't do the hard, I didn't sit on the Bond Advisory Committee and have people throw darts at me for five years or however long it was. But the moment this gets put on the ballot is the moment that my organizations go to work to get it passed. And we're gonna mobilize our forces.
Excuse me. Let the speaker conclude and don't interrupt, please. Be respectful.
I'll just slap him if he gets out of hand over. So that's the moment we go to work to get this passed for our community. And I wanna thank you for your leadership on this in the past. I think it's a long past time for another bond to take us forward into the future and I stand ready to help make that. Thank you.
Michael Bylsma. I'm not even gonna try. Okay, please do.
Good morning, Chair Bronson, Vice Chair Elias and Board of Supervisors. My name is Michael Billsma.
Actually, that's way west, God.
Good. You're in the minority and I live in District One. I'm also Vice President of the Board of Trustees of the Tucson Museum of Art. On Friday, the Board of Supervisors received a recommendation from the Pima County Bond Advisory Committee in support of a bond proposal and asking supervisors to allow a public vote on the bond proposal in November. The projects that would be funded on this bond issue include much-needed capital improvements, facilities repairs, affordable housing and public health, cultural and recreational initiatives. All projects that would improve our quality of life and that would stimulate additional tourism jobs and investment in our community. I'm here to ask the Board of Supervisors to agree to put this balanced bond proposal as recommended to you by the Advisory Committee on the November ballot. Pima County voters should be allowed the opportunity to consider and to vote on this important proposal, which has so many potential community benefits and economic benefits. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Barbie Urias. Urias?
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Huckleberry, Chair Bronson, Supervisors. My name's Barbie Urias. I live in South Tucson. And I just came here to let you know that I am in full support of the bond package. And my reasons are a little bit different. It's kind of personal. I find it very hard to get my young children. I have seven children. They're all adults and I have a hard time getting them to vote or even to pay attention to issues in the community. And this bond package is the first one that we've ever had that they're interested. They're interested in what's gonna happen with roads, neighborhoods, housing and things that are basic needs in the south side of Tucson. So they're kind of stirred up and they're excited and they're watching everything as we go along. So I'm just saying, keep up the good work and I hope you approve the package. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Burnett. Kevin Burnett.
Thank you, Chairman Bronson, County Manager Huckleberry and the Board. My name is Kevin Burnett. I've been a resident of Oral Valley for sixteen years. I'm also the Board Chair of the YMCA of Southern Arizona, a Board Member of Trio and I'm also the CFO of the Sun Companies, a company that has been proud to call Tucson home since nineteen twenty-nine. I am here to express my support, my company's support for the bond package that was presented to the county supervisors to bring to the November two thousand and fifteen ballot. I want to thank the Bond Advisory Committee for their hard work. I'm working on this bond package. I think it's a good balanced package. It provides economic development. It provides park tourism, something for the social agencies. I think you need to look at this not as a cost to the community, but as an investment in our community. And I strongly encourage you to go forward with this and bring it to the, bring it to the voters as part of the November two thousand and fifteen ballot. And I look forward to working, not only with Sun Companies, but the business community in supporting this as part of the November two thousand and fifteen ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Keith.
Chairman Bronson, Vice Chair Mr. Elias, members of the Board, County Administrator Eric Huckleberry. My name is Michael Keith. I'm the CEO of the downtown Tucson Partnership. I live about two blocks from here in downtown Tucson and I was Councilmember at Kazakh's appointment to the City Bond Advisory Committee. I'm here to urge your support of this bond proposal and to put this on the ballot. I think the enormous amount of work that's been done by the County Bond Committee as well as the City Bond Committee and all the years that have been put into this is, has resulted in a diverse, fair...